The call to order, the September tenth Lawrence Board of Education meeting. And the first item is to have an approve, a motion to approve the agenda.
Will we approve the agenda? Second.
Do we have to have that roll call? Oh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. Sorry. And then that moves to my report. I don't have much of a report tonight. I know, I wanted to thank all of the teachers and community members and parents who have reached out to board members over the past week or two, letting us know how they feel about our current situation with negotiations. And I know that we, there are some other board members that are going to comment more specifically to some of the things that we have heard. But I did want to touch base about the, there seems to be a misunderstanding about the fact that we are putting money towards savings. And instead of putting increasing salaries for, for teachers, and that's, that's not exactly accurate. We're putting money towards deficit spending. This is money we've already spent in the red. We are not filling our coffers with money. And I think that that is, that's a message out there that is not entirely correct. But we keep hearing it. So I wanted to say something about that. And, and I know that, like I said, I know other board members are going to speak more directly to some of the other things that we have been hearing. But again, thank you for sending us that, that feedback. I also wanted to welcome Gary Schmidt, who is here as our first student board member. And we're going to have a rotating group of students come in, and Dr. Lewis will explain a little bit more about how those students were selected. But thank you and welcome. We're so excited to have you.
Where's Gary from? What school?
What school?
Oh, it just.
Okay, cool.
Yep. So with that, I will turn it over to the superintendent.
Thank you. Definitely want to welcome Gary to his first board meeting, I'm assuming. But this is something that I understand the district used to, oh, second, you say? Okay. Excuse me, sir. The records show that this is his second one. But this is something that I understand the district used to do a while back, have students here. And I think it's important that students are at the table. You hear me talk a lot about the student in the seat. And I think, you know, the work that we do, the work that this board does in this room is definitely for the benefit of the student. And having that student's perspective here at the table is hugely important to us as we continue to move this district forward. And so we will rotate between our officers, selected students at both Lawrence High and Free State. And so they will have voices. And I don't know if they'll be able to make any decisions or any voting power. But they will definitely have some influence just by being in this room and keeping us grounded in, in why we do the work that we do. So again, welcome, Gary. If you'd like me to move into my comments. Okay. Let's have, well, I actually have several, I won't say a few, I have several things I want to report out on. One, the board is aware, I want to make the public aware that I did send a, a letter to Mayor Bowley. There definitely want, thanking him that the Director of Public Works let us know as a district about the commission that we're going to be discussing the formation of the Benefit District for construction of the Queen's Road. In addition to that, the, a signal at the intersection of Sixth and Queen's Road. And the letter was just outlining our opposition to the school district property being included in the area to be assessed. Benefit District should, in our opinion, provide some benefit to those property owners paying special assess, assessments. And I just wanted to know what was the benefit of Queen's Road improvements to the Lawrence School District? Especially given the fact that the north end of Queen Road adjoins to the Perry LaCompton School District. You know, just as the city commission experiencing budget issues, we are indeed considering, experiencing some budget and funding issues relative to our district priorities and what our community values. We definitely value our positive relationships that we've, that we have with the city, and we join many of the longstanding partnerships that exist between us. But we feel that the district has paid its fair share of costs associated with capital improvement projects and benefit the entire, I'm sorry, that benefit the entire community, including but not limited to full bond construction inspection, impairment fees that are sometime approximately around $250,000. And so we just wrote this letter to encourage the removal of the school district property from the Queen's Road Benefit District. I do want to extend, we as a district want to extend our sympathies to the Grant family upon the death of Craig Grant on Thursday. Craig taught social studies at West Junior High and supported the teaching profession while working for KNEA and as a legislative director for local lawmakers. Craig also served on the Lawrence School Board from 2004 to 2008, where he also held the position of president during the 2008, nine school year. Our thoughts are indeed with the Grant family, including Craig's wife Judy and son Mitchell. Lawrence Public Schools had a big day on yesterday at the Kansas Teacher of the Year Region Two Awards Banquet over in Topeka. Lawrence Teachers of the Year Nicole Korn, who's a kindergarten teacher over at Sunset Hill, and Carrie Davis, an ESL teacher at Liberty Memorial Central Middle School. They were both selected as regional semi-finalists, and then Nicole Korn advanced as the elementary finalist to represent our region at the state level of the Kansas Teacher of the Year Program. There are, there will be eight finalists who will be honored at the state awards banquet in November in Wichita. So definitely congratulations to both Nicole and Carrie. And thank you to Julie Boyle, Dr. Stubblefield, both principals of, well, the principal of Liberty Memorial and the principal of Sunset Hill, as well as who else was there with us? Jerry Kimball was also there. So thank you guys for giving up your Sunday to go over and support our teachers. Dear Phil, separate, separated, Dear Phil celebrated, it's not separated, celebrated his 50th anniversary on Sunday afternoon with a huge turnout. I think there were over 200, maybe close to 300 people there, consisting of alumni, staffs, former students, and parents. All attended in open house. And all three, that's right, all three out of 50 years, all three principals were there in attendance. Verilyn Gilbert, Susie Solster, and our current principal, Joni Appleman. Definitely want to thank our Lawrence School Foundation for organizing a tremendous community education breakfast on last Friday. And at the time this was written, it was on here that they raised more than $58,000 to support our schools. But since then, they raised a total of $113,000. And that's at that, that addition is a result of a $2,000 check from Hy-Vee, as well as a $50,000 gift from our friends over at Truity Credit Union. So I definitely want to thank our, yeah, our friends at the foundation and our foundation board and all of our, just our Lawrence community in general, who truly supports, supports its schools. We're definitely excited about the foundation's new fund. The I Can Fund a Need, that's the Classroom Angel Network, which will provide funding for school counselors and social workers to help meet those immediate emergency and basic needs of our students. And so definitely want to thank our 2018 Leadership Lawrence Class for creating this fund. I was honored to speak at the ribbon cutting of our Boys and Girls Club Teen Center last Thursday. The center enhances the district's partnership with our Boys and Girls Club, and it offers our middle and high school students high-quality after-school options. And definitely our, our Youth of the Year in the audience was, was there as well. All district staff received online Alice training. That's alert, lock down, inform, counter, and evacuate. We'll begin our on-site training, staff training this week at Southwest Middle School. And this is just a, a system that enhances our lockdown procedures and provides training to both students and staff so that they make informed decisions about protecting themselves and others when there is a threat to school safety. Again, I want to invite our school community to attend one of, one of our six Listening and Learning Tour sessions planned this fall. We actually have two coming up this month. On September the 20th, we'll be at West Middle School, and September the 25th, at Billy Mills Middle School. And I hope that our staff and community will attend and share their input about how they would prioritize our budget to make Lawrence Public Schools the best district in the country. You'll find those dates and times and locations on our website. And we definitely encourage all current parents, future parents, past parents. If you are a Lawrence citizen, we want you to come out and provide your input. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. So now we are at patron commentary. Do we have a few more? Okay. So I will read the audience participation, and then you can come up as we do it. So the USD 497 Board of Education welcomes patron comments and thanks you for taking time to talk to us about our policies and procedures. We set aside this time during our regular meetings to hear from the public. This is your time to share your opinions. However, complaints about specific staff or students will be heard by the board in executive session in order to protect the privacy of those individuals discussed. While you're not required to share your contact information, we ask that the information is provided to district staff and boards so that we can follow up on any specific concerns. And please do limit your comments to five minutes or less. So we have Leslie Downing.
Just talking to here. My name is Leslie Downing, and good evening, everybody. I teach kindergarten out at Langston Hughes Elementary. Been in the district for a little while. I'm here tonight just to talk about a statement made for teachers to work their contract, and that they are only needed to work their contract. Those words have been running through my mind since I've heard that and have left me feeling a little disappointed. The need for teachers to work their contract, yet the expectations are very different. Teacher's contracted day may be from 8:15 to 4:15 with a 45-minute planned time without students. But during this contracted time, we are expected to plan and teach the standards to the whole group while being prepared for small group interventions, enrichment, and on-level instruction. We are expected to complete assessments, to progress monitor, plan engaging social studies, science, and health lessons, including projects and many, while many times having to provide supplies and materials needed. We are expected to plan the morning meetings to build that classroom community and teach the social skills, as well as foster those emotional needs of every student in our classroom. We are expected to communicate with the parent community regularly about their students and do important and very crucial work for our schools and our district throughout the year. Almost everything that happens in our day to provide what is best for our students, for our schools, and for our district does not get planned, prepared, or completed during our contracted day. If teachers only worked their contracted days, we would not be doing what is best for our students. I love my job, and my district, the school, and our student, my students are a priority. The teachers in our district have made their classrooms, their students, and parent community priorities. It is time for teachers to be the priority. I read an article in the paper where Dr. Lewis said, "We live in the most educated community in Kansas, which means we know better, which means we should do better, because our students and our teachers deserve better." Thank you.
Thank you. Then we have Amy Fallon.
A little of the hill here. Makes me taller. Okay. Well, first off, thank you so much for allowing me to address you and for all the time that you commit to serve our district. It's really appreciated. And welcome, Dr. Lewis. I've not had a chance to meet you, so welcome to our district. My name is Amy Fallon. I'm a parent of two USD 497 students. My boys have had wonderful teachers at every level, and for that, we are grateful. I want to start by sharing that I believe everyone who works in education in our schools is important, and it is not an easy task. I value administrators of the district office, principals, assistant principals, teachers, paraprofessionals, social workers, counselors, custodial staff, and food services, just to name a few. Every single one of them is important. I am not speaking to take anything away from what any, of what any of you do, or any of you do, or any of the people at the district office, or in the administration level. Instead, I'm here to speak to the group I feel is the most important for all students, teachers. The ones who work day in and day out on the front line. In addition, I believe paras are critical for both students and teachers. We face a current shortage of paraprofessionals, and this directly impacts both students and teachers. Please consider revisiting the budget you have already approved and look at a reallocation of resources. I understand this is not an easy task. We can't spend money we do not have. But I do think that when there's a amount, a certain amount of capital available, we can always look at how we prioritize and how we spend that capital. I understand that priorities were made for the year, and it appears frontline staff were not even a mid-tier priority. I believe this board values teachers, and by the raise given last year, you've shown that to be true. You've also worked to help with new teacher salaries, which are also appreciated. And to go offline a little bit, because I have more time than I thought, I also know this board has worked a lot to make teachers feel more appreciated and that they can speak up. I know just three years ago, teachers were afraid to speak. A teacher might have been afraid to walk up here and speak. And you guys have worked hard to change that culture, and it's appreciated. So thank you for what you've done so far, but please do more. With the teachers' health insurance going up this year, the $500 increase will go to offset that change for most. Teachers who have been in the district 10 years or more make less on average than teachers with the same experience in neighboring districts. You've shown a willingness to retain great leaders, but we need to also show a willingness to compensate those who work directly with the students. We need to compensate paras so they do not need to work a second or third job to make ends meet. We need to ensure both groups feel valued, and currently, they do not. In fact, they feel disrespected. Lawrence needs to do better. These experienced teachers who love their students and consistently put in hours and hours of extra time because they love their job and students deserve better. Please take a close look, an independent look at area salaries and years of experience. Please also take a look at areas where you could reduce spending to compensate teachers. If we can't take care of those in the classroom, it is okay to look at other areas that can be reduced. Value teachers and their input by asking them prioritize what expenses and resources they think could be reduced if necessary. I also think an objective comparison of administrative staff numbers and budget percent to the total should be analyzed to see how USD 497 stacks up to other districts. If we're not able to pay teachers the same as neighboring school districts, we do need to see if USD 497 might be out of balance. If we're going to lose teachers with 10-plus years' experience next year- If we're going to lose teachers with 10-plus years' experience next year to Johnson County, which is even more appealing with the K-10 access, as a parent, I have to ask those hard questions. I believe over 100 teachers left last year, not all for pay, of course, but that is still a large number. I don't want to see even one of our most qualified, experienced teachers leave next year if making them feel valued and compensated fairly can make a difference. Please go back to the budget and put those on the front lines at the top of the list, even if it means you have to take it from somewhere else. You cannot make all students the priority of the district without prioritizing the compensation of those who work directly with them. Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have Connie Grimes.
Hello, my name is Connie Grimes and I too am a parent here in the Lawrence School District. I have five children who have either graduated from or are currently attending Lawrence Public Schools. I'm also the daughter of a career educator who retired about 20 years ago from the Kansas City, Kansas School District. His salary 20 years ago is about the same as what the teachers are making today. In that 20-year time period, teachers have not made leaps and bounds in their salaries as they should have with cost of inflation, with any other things that have changed over that 20-year period of time. What my dad made 20 years ago is about the same as what he would be making today. I just think that our teachers are the lifeblood of this school district and they are on the front lines of everything that's happening. They are expected to educate our children and now they're being expected to keep them safe from, you know, harm that is just unimaginable. And I don't think they're fairly compensated for that. I also think that our paraprofessionals are not fairly compensated as well. My son just graduated from the University of Kansas and he made more money at his job at the Kansas Union Bookstore than what our paraprofessionals make in our district. So those are just a couple of things in addition to what Amy had already said that I wanted to add to your thinking process. Thank you.
Thank you. So it's Board Commentary. If anybody would like to say anything in OGR. Okay.
So I want to start by echoing Jessica's comments of thanking the individual people, teachers and parents and people in the public who've been emailing us with your thoughts and your concerns and your questions. And I've been trying really hard to reply to all the emails as I get them. One thing that I did notice at the end of last week and over the weekend and saw it a couple of times on Facebook, even though my wife told me to stop reading Facebook, was what I'm going to refer to as the 11-point Did You Know list. And as I read through that list, as it came through my inbox over and over and over again and saw it online, I felt like it needed to be responded to. And so I've typed up a response to the 11 points and so I'm going to read those. And then when I get home tonight, I'm going to take this and I'm going to post it on my Facebook page if anybody wants it. If you can't find it on my Facebook page, you can send me an email and I'll send you the full text. So this may take a little bit. As I get nervous, I may read really fast, so I apologize, but I'll try to get through it. So point number one is, and the email starts with, "Did you know? One high-level administrator was recently given an increase in pay of $20,000, but our paras make less than $20,000 per year working full-time. Yes, I'm aware of both salaries. Dr. Stubblefield received, earned her $20,000 increase as part of a retention package linked to her taking on the duties of deputy superintendent. She was promised to, she was promoted to this position over a year ago but was unable to move into it prior to assuming the role of interim superintendent. Upon hiring Dr. Lewis, Dr. Stubblefield was finally able to move into the deputy superintendent role and increasing her pay was appropriate given her duties and the experience she gained as the interim superintendent. The salary scale for our paras is a separate issue and one the board does need to investigate and it may need to be, it may need to be updated after reviewing our market data." Number two, administrators were asked by the board to list their priorities for the budget monies and new monies coming from the state. Retention of quality teachers and paras didn't even make the list. This is a mischaracterization of what happened and leads to a misunderstanding of why it happened. Teacher and paras salaries have been and always will be a high priority for us. This is more of a semantic misunderstanding. The finance director, Kathy Johnson, requested the items from various department directors and then the executive leadership team of the district went through a process to rank them into three tiers before presenting them to the board. Teacher and paras salaries weren't on that simply because they aren't included in the budget discussions. Teacher salaries are discussed during the negotiations process, which is a completely separate process, and the board then addresses other employee groups after negotiations is finalized. As a result, these salaries weren't included as a line item in the publication at our, I believe, July 22nd board meeting. In later meetings after we started to receive questions, we included a line item and tried to clarify why it hadn't been included from the beginning. Number three, most of the budget was spent or distributed before the district came to the bargaining table. A $500 annual raise is all that's left. We are being offered what is left and expected to like it. While this is technically true, it leaves out some key points about this year's process. There are two primary reasons the budget was published prior to negotiations being finalized. The school district has a legal obligation to publish a budget prior to August 1st and negotiations started late. The district is legally obligated to publish prior to August 1st for several reasons, one of which is property tax implications. The primary reason negotiations started later this year was a request from the Lawrence Education Association to the district to wait to begin until after the state Supreme Court had issued its ruling about school finance. The school board agreed to this request. The court's timeline and that agreement did not, however, alter our legal obligation to meet the August 1st timeline. Number four, the talk of deficit spending, aka using a savings account, took years to occur, but the board is attempting to quick-fix it on the backs of teachers and paras. We are expected once again to accept less and take one for the team. That way, money can go into a savings account. Basically, teachers and paras are expected to fill that savings account. This is absolutely a mischaracterization. We are not putting money into a savings account. We are not stashing funds away for a rainy day. The rainy day is already here. We are using funds to pay for expenses the district has already incurred. We've been using money from our contingency reserve fund for the last five years as we went into deficit spending, spending more than what we brought in. That fund is about to run out of money, i.e. the balance will be negative at the end of this year if we do not make any changes. We are attempting to slow the rate of loss from that fund by using some of the money we receive from the state to cover costs instead of contingency reserve funds. The payment made from the state fund is only half of what we need to cover our deficit spending for the year. We still need to find more money to bring the district completely out of the red and into the black, financially speaking. Number five, dumping so much extra money into a savings account basically sends the message to the state that we don't need it as a district. See my response to question number four. Number six, teachers and paras are the only ones who have been asked to take one for the team. We were told there's no money from this budget after the district's administrators' priorities were considered and budgeted. Remember that retention of quality staff wasn't on the list. Please see my response to questions two and four. Number seven, teachers work a set contract. Those paid holidays and summer breaks are not paid at all. They aren't days in our contract, so we don't work them. Therefore, many teachers work, need to work a second job during the year or in summer to supplement their pay. I sympathize and understand the frustration behind saying teachers have paid holidays when they aren't paid because they aren't in the contract to begin with. I also personally know a lot of teachers who work a second job. Unfortunately, this is not a phenomenon that is unique to the Lawrence Public School system. Number eight, in the past seven years, teachers have received one decent raise and we keep having it thrown back at us as a reason to stop asking for more money. Personally, I see nothing wrong with teachers, paras, the LEA, or anyone else asking for a raise. I ask for a raise from my employer every year. That is not what I use historical data about raises for. I use the data to counter what I see as a very narrow argument that other districts are giving staff a bigger raise, why isn't USD 497? Well, other districts haven't been given consistent raises over the last five to seven years, so they're choosing to handle their raises differently. Every school district is different. Number nine, the much-publicized raise percentage is misleading and it is not solely raise and pay. The percentage includes the cost to cover, includes the cost to cover our health insurance and benefits. The money for continued healthcare coverage actually counts as part of the actual salary raise. This is a misrepresentation of how pay raises are allocated. The percentage offered to teachers is 2.2%. That represents an increase we have offered on the base, $500, which means every teacher receives $500. About 50% of our staff will also receive vertical and some will receive horizontal movement for additional education on the schedule. An example, consider the following. BS Step 1 to BS Step 2 is an increase of $400 for a total raise of 900. MS Step 1 to MS Step 2 is an increase of $600 for a total raise of 1100. BS plus 30 to MS is an increase of $600 for a total raise of 1100. Many of the values for moving down the schedule in the MS columns exceed $1,000. The percentage also includes any supplemental salary increases, retirements, et cetera. It does not include health insurance since that is not part of the matrix. Each teacher's individual percentage increase will vary depending on whether they can move vertically and/or horizontally on the matrix. Number 10, a parent in Lawrence who has worked for 20 years in 497 makes less than the starting salary of most surrounding districts. We currently have around 45 unfilled para positions in the district. As I stated in question one, we need to evaluate our para salaries. And number 11, if our veteran teachers were working in surrounding districts, most of us would increase our pay by $3,000 to $10,000 annually. When teachers appointed this out to the board and district administration over the years, the usual response has been then leave and go work there. Is that really what we want for Lawrence kids? There is no question, we have school districts within driving distance of Lawrence that pay better than Lawrence, and I don't personally believe that we will ever be able to achieve parity anytime soon. And that's not because of a lack of loyalty, commitment, desire, or love for our teachers. It's a question of math. We have approximately 1,000 teachers and using the range of 3,000 to 10,000 from the question, from the question, that's between $3 million and $10 million annually just to pay the salary increases. It doesn't count improving the pay for paras, hiring more FNO staff to complete maintenance work orders more quickly, adequate custodial staff to keep our properties clean, or any other priority. And before anyone suggests that we don't replace athletic fields or don't remodel the middle or high schools or buy funky furniture, as I've seen, those are all paid for with capital outlay or bond construction funds, separate pools of money that we can't be used for general fund expenditures like salaries. In my professional life, I work in the healthcare field and the same situation is often true for nurses. Why does one hospital pay nurses better than a different hospital 15 miles down the road? I don't have a definitive answer to our district's situation, other than to say that for me, personally, I'm trying to look at the big picture and do what seems right for the district, the students, and all the district's employees. Sometimes I will do better than others, but I will always try.
Thank you, GR. Anybody else? Shannon?
I wanted to report on a couple of things that have occurred over the last couple of weeks. I do want to add to something that GR said, though, which is, you know, he mentioned the deficit spending and that has been something that I've heard, heard from a lot of people about and I've heard the same thing that GR has about putting it in savings and that's not what we're doing. But I think more importantly, I wanted to make the point that the reason that we are deficit spending, and this really predates GR and Kelly joining the board, is that over the last five years, year after year after year, we have heard threats from the legislature as the legislature was trying to deal with their own gaping hole in the state budget that they were going to come in and sweep fund balances from school districts. We had, you know, six and seven years ago, we had some pretty healthy fund balances in our district and the board collectively over the years, some of us were here and some of us weren't, but collectively over the last number of years, made the decision that we had better spend those fund balances where we stood a chance of potentially having that money taken away and never being able to spend it on our students and our staff. So we have done that and, you know, when people have asked me, well, how do we get, how do we get to the situation that we're in where we have this deficit spending that we have to deal with? Our district did not cut as deeply over the last several years when our funding was either stagnant or declined, actually, in some of the years. We did not cut as deeply as some other districts had to. We didn't eliminate positions and programs to the extent that we might have otherwise had to had we not made that decision to spend those fund balances. I don't wish that we are, we're in the position that we're in right now, but that being said, I hope that knowing that information, people can understand why, as a board member, I feel like we tried to make a decision to prioritize our teachers and our staff by doing that. That's probably small comfort in the situation that we're in right now, but I do feel that it was not done, it was not intended to be a negative thing. It was intended to help protect programs and services and staff in our district and so I just wanted to say that. You know, there's been a lot going on in the last couple, last week especially. I did want to report on a, GR and I had a facilities meeting with our bond construction team last Thursday. I'm going to completely switch gears now. And we had a really great report from the design team. We talked a lot about the Lawrence High project in particular. They are in the beginning stages of planning a number of things about the design that go beyond the floor plans that are on the paper, having to do with some things that we've expressed in our work session with that design team about how can we preserve the history of the building and display it and educate our community and our school students about some of the great history at Lawrence High and also some of the great alumni that have walked through those halls. And so they are starting to really think through those decisions and think through how we can establish a process to make those decisions and what kind of suggestions they're going to make. Had a great discussion about that. We also heard a very detailed report from our engineering firm, Henderson Engineering, on sustainability as part of that project. That's been something that the board has talked about repeatedly over the years with bond projects and being interested in making sure that in our design, we're making choices that help us save money on the facilities in terms of our utility use especially. And our, the engineer who gave that report walked us through choices regarding lighting, regarding HVAC systems, regarding fixtures throughout the building and showed us how they have selected, what they've selected and the rating and the expected energy savings that we're going to see. I actually was very impressed with the results that they are thinking that they will be able to get through some of these choices in terms of savings, you know, and that's something that comes out of our general fund. And so any savings that we can get through spending those capital dollars to save us money in the general fund is a positive. So that was really great. Also, as Dr. Lewis mentioned, there were several other events last Thursday, including the Boys and Girls Club ribbon cutting at the Don and Beverly Gardeners Center for Great Futures, which I attended. Very gratifying to see that project come together. That was part of a collaboration that involved the district spending some of our bond dollars on upgrades to the culinary kitchen, to put in a culinary kitchen at the College and Career Center that will be used by our district and also by the Boys and Girls Club. That project just turned out beautifully and I'm really excited about what that means for our continued partnership with Boys and Girls Club. It was also really neat to see the National Chief Executive of the Boys and Girls Club Organization came to Lawrence for the ribbon cutting and spoke and I was, I was impressed that he was there for that event. And finally, Taste of Lawrence was last Thursday and I know there were a number of staff and board members who attended that as well. And it's always a really great event and it was nice that it could be indoors at Crown Automotive instead of out in a soggy field. So thank you to all the people that I had a chance to speak with at that event as well. That's all I have.
Shannon, anybody else? Jill?
I want to report on the Late Start Committee, which we met a few weeks ago and are meeting again tomorrow to study the possibility of starting high school later with the goal of achieving or increasing student achievement. Some of the things, the stage of the committee is at right now, we talked about information that we needed to collect and to assess and basically focused on what we know we don't know and how we would get that information. Some of the questions that we talked about getting information about was how starting late and then ending later of the high school would affect students who are involved in outside-school activities and athletics and how it would affect student, I'm sorry, teacher, coaches, and activity sponsors. We talked about trying to find out how many kids right now are attending zero hour and how that could affect it, how many kids are showing up early already. We talked about surveying parents and I actually did not bring my original notes. I left them on the kitchen counter, so please feel free to jump in and add any more that you can think of. And we- And we talked about reaching out to neighboring communities who, or school communities, who have done this in the past, and what the successes and pitfalls were that they experienced, and what else did we decide to gather, or just search for information? I know we talked about doing an employee survey, parent survey, and transportation, I think, traffic studies, yeah.
No, that's correct, and we are meeting tomorrow, by the way. We did talk about surveys, and tomorrow we'll be reviewing the data from our first survey. We also talked about, you know, are there surrounding schools that have made this change? And one of the things I'll talk about tomorrow is that, over the last three to four years, the Hickman Mills School District in Missouri and the Columbia School District have made high school changes. The San Diego Unified School District, my old stomping grounds, second largest in California, they've just announced they're going to make the change. They have 22 high schools. There is a bill sitting on the desk of the Governor of California that would actually mandate that middle and high schools not start before 8:30, and that's, you know, hundreds and hundreds of schools. I don't know if he's going to sign that or not, but it's actually passed both parts of the legislature. So, that's some of the kind of information that we'll talk about, and some of the kinds of, in response to some of the requests. We did, two meetings ago, we did do a review of the data, which, and we compiled this, and, you know, we can make this publicly available in terms of the research, because there's a lot of it. But we went through and kind of talked about what the research shows in terms of the various, both academic and health benefits. So, that's, I think that's kind of where we're at.
I think, yeah, I agree. I think we're focusing on now, on trying to gather from a Lawrence community, you know, study group, what information we need to gather and to share with our community in this process. And we have a group of about 25 people that are there from the parent, representing parents, representing transportation, representing businesses, and other subgroups of our committee, to share, and teachers to share concerns, challenges, what they see, what information we need to gather. So, if there's anyone out there that has feelings about this, or concerns, or input that they want to share, please feel free, this is the time to sort of funnel it this direction, and we'll report back to you what the next step will be as decided by this community study group. So, just wanted to pass on kind of what we've talked about, and leave open the conduit for information from anyone that's interested, or concerned, or excited about the possibility.
So, Jill and Rick, can you remind us, and those listening, what the timeline is overall for?
Yeah, we're supposed to, I think we've been charged with coming back with a recommendation of, and sharing the information that we've gathered in the beginning of December, possibly. And I doubt, we'll see what happens from there. So, that's our timeline. And like I said, we've been gathering, trying to, the group's been trying to figure out what we need to gather, and what we need, what questions we need to ask, and what opportunities and challenges there are.
When you listed the groups that you were going to get surveys of, you specifically didn't say students?
Yeah, I think every subgroup, you're right, I probably did not say students, but that's definitely, definitely one of the groups. Like I said, I thank you for pointing that out. I'm sure it says that on the piece of paper on my kitchen table. So, yeah, thank you.
Anything else?
I just wanted, I mean, I didn't, I wanted to just kind of add to what Shannon said. I know they had their board, their, oh my gosh, to the bond, regarding the bond. Facilities, yeah, there we go. I went to the site council meeting at LHS, and we kind of had a presentation, and what, as a parent, I was especially impressed with the goal of trying to minimize kids being removed from outside of the building as they do the project. They had goals of, like, where they would store the materials, it wouldn't be on the grounds ideally, so that it won't interfere with parking. They were planning to store their materials, like, at Centennial and bring them along. So, just like, trying to make it as smooth of a transition with such a huge project. I was especially impressed with that. And then, Gold Evans even mentioned coming out and doing, just being available during parent-teacher conference for some Q and As for, you know, parents who may not be able to attend a site council meeting, or et cetera. And just even the phasing is, they're looking pretty, pretty good and promising, so. And of course, I went to Boys and Girls Club event, Commensary for the World. Boys and Girls Club is near and dear to my heart, so Monica, I'm so excited for the position that she's come in, and all the greatness that comes out of BGC, and not that I'm biased or anything, but it's just an awesome, just hearing, I forgot the young lady's name, Desiree, Destiny, oh, she, oh, just hearing, just the experience that she has with Boys and Girls Club, and she's in 7th grade, and she speaks better than I do in public. And, I mean, I'm just so happy that 497 and Boys and Girls Club can have this relationship and just continue to bring forth more roots and destinies, so.
Kelly, did you want to say something? I wanted to publicly congratulate you on your new role at Willow, and say that we're very excited, and I'm excited for them, and I just think they're very lucky to have you. So, congratulations, Kelly. I also wanted to invite you all to a Research Impact Talk that the Social Welfare Department is having on early education assets. That will be coming, I should have invited you earlier, because it's September 13th, but I will send you details via email. But why I really wanted to bring this to your attention is because it's, the research is rather rigorous. My good friend and mentor, Melinda Lewis, will be presenting her, about her book that she wrote, that looks at how research on assets and how it infects children's social and emotional development, early academic achievement, and prospects for post-secondary enrollment, really in that early education time. So, she's, her work is around early assets made available to low-income kids, and, oh my gosh, it's just powerful, and it gives me hope. And so, I encourage you to go if you can go, and I will send details. It's also on our district website. That is connected, sort of an early childhood theme. GR and I got to go to Parents as Teachers tonight. I think all of us should go to Parents as Teachers before sitting at negotiation tables, or before sitting here at this board, because it really reminded me about the work that we do, and the power at every level of interaction with kids. And they're just doing really great work over at East Heights now. So, if you haven't, they said you can come, certain days, they gave us, they have community days. So, they do have students on wait lists, and they have made community days that you can come, maybe Kevin can speak, is he here? And he's like, Kelly, I'm waiting, I wasn't listening to you.
The two, the two groups that she, that Audrey Poole specifically told us about was, one was on Thursday, and that was a support group for postpartum parents, either men or women, and not just depression, but just recognizing that there's a lot of issues postpartum, so that was a support group. And then, on Fridays, they have a under 18-month baby group.
Just an amazing opportunity for parents.
Small group with less, slightly less chaos than what we had.
Yeah, they do good work.
The chaos was fun.
And that's connected to, I did get to stop at the Deerfield 50th reunion, or celebration and reunion for a lot of people. And at that event, I walked around the building, it was my first time to be inside of it. It's really interesting to compare it to the other buildings that we have, and I got to talk to some folks that are connected there. But I also got pulled aside by a couple teachers who wanted to talk to me about the negotiation process. And here's my takeaway from that conversation. I was, I am all about data and reading, I'm reading for enjoyment, Arnie Duncan's new latest book, I am like, you know, I really try to read about education policy and understand the work that we're doing here, and how it impacts the community. Dr. Lewis recommended a book I've read. But, so, what I found is that I was getting in the weeds, trying to explain, over-explain. They were making these points, and I was countering them, and trying to, you know, really just explain how I'd come to this decision-making around where we were at right now. And when I left that conversation and reflected, I realized what I failed to do was listen. So, my takeaway, in fact, I sent them an apology for that afterwards. My takeaway from this whole process, and my learning as a new board member, is that my, what my duty really is to listen to teachers and educators, and to hear what your experiences are and your stories are, so that I can make better decisions, more informed decisions. And so, for those of you that came tonight and spent time drafting a page or two of words, I know that takes time. I deeply appreciate that you showed up, I know it's not easy, I'm going to try to do better. And then, I did want to say that along those lines of practically doing better, listening is one thing a person could do, and Dr. Lewis is doing that really exceptionally well. I'm really proud that he's here in his efforts to listen, gather data from our staff and employees. I have talked about this a little bit with anybody that will listen, but, which is, you know, lately, a lot more people than usual. I would like to request that for next year, that we begin planning, looking at the way that we do negotiations in this district. So, there are different models. The one that I have suggested is a common goal-setting model, and one of the advantages of that, and I'm not saying that's necessarily the best model, but one of the things that I love about this particular model, is that it would allow for us to, negotiating essentially about wages and benefits, but really, it's also an opportunity to have a conversation with our union, to ask, that represents the best interests of our teachers, what else is happening for you within the classroom setting? So, if we are having priority setting earlier, so we're coming to the table to talk about goal-setting in March, as opposed to this year, the unfortunate combination of late legislation, and also a very late court ruling, meant that we were making decisions in a very unusual timeline, and I would like to approve that for next year, so that we can, in my commitment to listen to teachers, also listening to teachers, like, when we have an opportunity to do something about what you've said. And I think that would be earlier in the budgetary decision-making process. So, I didn't mean to go on quite so long, but I did want to get all those things off my chest, and I appreciate everybody's attention. And again, just thank you all for keeping us on the right path.
Thank you, Kelly.
We're talking a group tonight, I actually have one more thing too, because I forgot to mention that Jill and Dr. Lewis and some staff went to tour the Juvenile Delinquents Center this week, with some members from the county. And we had a great tour, very, very informational. We learned a lot about our day school there, and also about the, I guess, the sort of who is actually in residence at JDC. Surprisingly, I thought it was surprising, anyway, the majority of their kids that are actually housed there are there for because they're kids in need of care, not because they've actually done anything illegal. So, I think that that's a really interesting dynamic there. But as sort of things are changing in the court system about who can be court-ordered to attend the day school, we're going to be coming to the table with the county to talk through how we're going to look at that, and what could possibly, how can we partner in doing that work? So, it will be a topic of conversation that we have at our upcoming joint city-county meeting, which we also didn't really announce today, but that's on the 19th, and open to the public to attend. And so, I think that, you know, we'll get some good information about that, but, so that's kind of just laying the groundwork for it, but I think it's something we're going to have to face and deal with, and we've got, you know, the alternative education conversation that we started is also going to kind of fit into this larger story. So, I will say, it was kind of fun going on a tour with this guy, because I hadn't been in a building with students with him before, and so, it's pretty hard to keep his attention. He's like, squirrel. Goes over to the table, sits down with a kid, immediately starts talking, has to go meet all the teachers, and so, trying to keep Dr. Lewis focused on the tour and the information we were getting was pretty funny. Kevin was there, and we were giggling at, you know, trying to get Dr. Lewis, we were like, well, we'll tell him later, you know?
Everybody there knows him now.
Yeah, but it was awesome, too, because it was like, well, this is, you know, it was fantastic, because it was really welcoming. I think we left there, and everybody really felt good about us coming in, and we didn't, it wasn't that fishbowl effect where you're kind of staring at everybody, he's sitting down at the table, and so, I thought you modeled a really great way to go on such a tour. So, yeah, thanks for that.
If I could just add to that, those are our teachers there as well, and so, I wanted to chat with them, and just kind of hear their perspectives, and got some amazing teachers over there, as well as some students that want to stay there. And so, if you think about this, this center for students, the Juvenile Detention Center, you would think that students wouldn't want to be there. But the way one of our teachers described the nurturing environment, and as she was describing it, she was describing this juvenile detention facility, this is what we do for students. And I told the group, I said, she just described all of our schools, you know, all of our schools must be nurturing as such. And so, just kudos to our amazing teachers that work day in and day out, not only at that facility, but definitely at all of our buildings.
Could you remind us what time that joint meeting starts on the 19th, and where?
Yeah, it self-starts at 3:30, and it's at the Foley Building at the Douglas County Fairgrounds.
Okay.
For us, we're invited at 3 for kind of a meet and greet, and certainly, the public could come to the meet and greet as well, but the meeting won't officially begin until 3:30.
Thank you.
And then, I guess we're ready for consent agenda. I do think we have a retirement.
Yes, I want to acknowledge Head Custodian of New York Elementary, Jeffrey Cassidy, and show, express our appreciation for his 31 years of service and devotion to his community, this community and its school. So, thank you.
Okay. Do you want to go ahead and just read the motion for consent?
Oh, I move the Board of Education adopt the items listed on the consent agenda.
Second.
Venture?
Yes.
Gordon Ross?
Yes.
Ingram?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Kimball?
Yes.
Eason?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0.
Okay, then we are about to start our first report, but I wanted to address Gary really quickly. We obviously talked a lot, but if you have questions during this presentation, or any feedback on anything we discuss, we want you to feel very free to say, hey, over here, I have a question, or I want to say something. So, please know that we want your voice if you have something to say. Okay. And with that, so we are going to, our report tonight is on the Tobacco 21 Initiative, and we have Vicky Colley Akers here, who's the Associate Director of Health Promotion Research at KU, and Denise Johnson, our Assistant Director of Health and Wellness.
Thank you so much for your patience.
Yes, yes. And I think some special guests, but I'll let you introduce them.
Good evening. My name is Vicky Colley Akers, and on behalf of my colleagues, which include Denise Johnson, Monica Dittmer, and Ruth, who's going to say her last name, because I will not do it very well. Thank you. My apologies, thank you. Thank you very much for the opportunity to talk about something that we feel is really important. I am the Chair of the Tobacco-Free Living Committee, that's part of the Live Well Coalition, and also Chair of the Tobacco 21 Task Force. Our task force consists of many different community partners, including the American Heart Association, the Boys and Girls Club of Lawrence, and the Lawrence Douglas County Health Department. We've been working to understand the impact of a policy like Tobacco 21 that raises the legal age of sales of tobacco products from 18 to 21, and its impact that it might have here in Lawrence. Data from the Youth Behavioral Risk Factor Surveillance System suggests that 1 in 5 Kansas high school students use some form of tobacco products, that's about 20%. Research tells us that most underage teenage users of tobacco access that tobacco through their of-age peers. This exchange of tobacco products from students who, as 18-year-olds, are able to legally purchase tobacco, to underage students is referred to as a social supply chain, and it's this social supply chain that is really the... And it's this social supply chain that is really the focus of a Tobacco 21 policy. About 90% of lifelong tobacco users begin smoking before the age of 21. And we know that if we're able to delay the age of initiation, we will make it more likely that people won't start or become long-term tobacco users. Another appeal for Tobacco 21 is that it seems to be effective. Two separate studies have found that youth tobacco use dropped by as much as 20, or excuse me, 50% in cities in which Tobacco 21 had passed. Lastly, we know that this will have an impact on the long-term tobacco use in our community. The Institute of Medicine estimates that Tobacco 21 should reduce tobacco use by as much as 12% for the community as a whole. Our task force is eager for Lawrence to join the 21 other communities in Kansas, thank you, and more than 300 in the U.S. that have passed Tobacco 21 policies. We are hopeful that the support of USD 497 will help us make a strong case to the City Commission that T-21 will have a positive impact here in Lawrence. The importance of this is made even more clearly by the amazing youth who know firsthand what the landscape of tobacco use looks like in high school. With that, I'll hand it over to my colleague Monica to tell you more.
Hello, my name is Monica Ditmer. I am the Executive Director for the Boys and Girls Club Center for Great Futures. I believe Denise is passing around a device for you all to look at. Healthy lifestyles has always been a priority outcome for Boys and Girls Club. Recently, through grant funding from the Kansas Health Foundation and their Healthy Living Initiative, we have put into action a plan that will combat the staggering statistics that Vicki just described about the current tobacco climate that faces our youth, our teens here in Lawrence today. As a part of this initiative, we not only implement Smart Moves, which is a Healthy Choices Prevention Lifestyle Planning Program, but we also have formed a local chapter called Resist. Resist is a youth-led statewide movement created to fight against the tobacco industry's influence on young Kansans. Our initial Resist chapter consisted of four teens, two from Lawrence High School and two from Free State High School. These teens began a mission to advocate in the larger community as a part of Lawrence's Live Well Tobacco 21 Task Force. With our partners, Resist has hosted or attended now 20 advocacy events to increase the awareness and to take steps to implement the Tobacco 21 policy here in Lawrence, Kansas. I would like to introduce you to not only the Boys and Girls Clubs of Kansas State Youth of the Year, but also our, one of our inaugural Resist members, Ruth Gathen-Gury, and Ruth can give you an idea about her thoughts on tobacco use among her peers.
Hey, everybody. I hope we're having a good night. I'm Ruth and I'm a senior at Free State High School. So today I was talking to some friends about what I was doing tonight, and one of the guys at a table next to me was like, oh, but you're not going to tell them to get rid of jewels at Free State, right? It's a problem that is reoccurring at our school and it's skyrocketed, skyrocketed over the past two years. Freshmen are getting into it even at a younger age because of our large population of seniors who are already 18 years old. You can't go to the bathroom during class without seeing somebody jeweling. It's plagued our school everywhere you go, in the parking lot, locker room, cafeteria, even in class sometimes you'll see people jeweling. The device you see passing around looks like a long flash drive and you'll often see people charging it on their school laptops. So people aren't ashamed about it. It's the kids in band, it's the kids in student council, it's the kids that you wouldn't think to do those kinds of things. We've normalized it. As you can see by this picture up here, you can also see that it is marketed towards teenagers, towards young people. It looks like candy. If you don't look at the title, you would think that it's candy. So we are being targeted as youth, but I know for a fact if we do raise the age to 21, we will have to go towards college people to now get that, which is a lot harder than going to somebody who's just a senior. So I urge you guys to be aware about T-21, do your research, and please vote for it. Thank you.
Isn't she amazing? So I'm Denise Johnson, and I am the Assistant Director of Health and Wellness for the school district. And it was at a meeting that Dr. Stubblefield and I attended that I listened to Monica, I listened to Ruth speak. And at that time, we understood that there is an issue here that we need to be addressing. We were alarmed by the information we heard, the number of peers that Ruth shared, and the number of students in high school that are vaping. Dr. Stubblefield at that time asked me to investigate a little further into that, and this was March of last year. I talked with teachers from the high school, parents, I actually have a senior son last year at Free State and a number of his friends to get more of a perspective of what we were looking at here. And honestly, with the sensationalized devices that are out there and the device that you just see, the jewel that came around, it was very difficult to even detect that that was some sort of tobacco device. And that was the education piece that we needed to come forward. So after talking to everyone, we decided that the lack of information for these products that, I mean, as Ruth shared with you, the marketing techniques that they're using with our youth, the fact that they have the enticing flavors, and honestly, it's also become something that's alluring and kind of a challenge to see if I can get away with it, because there is not a smell. So with that, talking with teachers and administrative staff, we went into, and I had a member of Resist with Ruth, Monica, and KDHD that came in and did a presentation for the staff, both staffs at Lawrence High School and Free State, along with the PE teachers and health teachers at Medall, in order to provide some more informative information. So from there, they said we need to be able to provide a little bit stronger curriculum to those students. So taking that information, and currently our health book does not have tobacco, it has tobacco information, but definitely not e-cigarettes or vaping. So we went a little further. We worked last spring and into the summer and addition to curriculum. We reached out to KDHD, and they are coming in and going to give presentations to our ninth grade health classes. We actually have required curriculum in sixth, eighth, and ninth in health. And so in our ninth grade classes, as freshmen enter, that will be one of the speakers that they will listen to. And I just want to, I'm very proud, and Jessica, that was, congratulations, I also work with Willow, so that's really exciting. I wanted to just say, I'm just very proud to be here in the city. We have a very proactive community, and we're always thinking of our students, and the community thinks of education. I just want to say that we're going to continue with our curriculum. The state of Kansas just this last summer passed the new state standards for health and physical education, so we will, using those standards, will move forward and continue to make that curriculum more robust for our students.
We are really grateful for the professional development and curricular changes that the USD 497 has made in response to the youth chapter really raising up this particular issue. And we have just one more request. We would like to respectfully request that you, USD 497, provide a letter of support to the Lawrence City Commission that will consider Tobacco 21 on October 9th. We do feel like it is time for Lawrence to have a Tobacco 21 policy, and hope that you'll be able to support us in that. Thank you again for the opportunity to talk tonight.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? I do have. Yeah, Shannon. So let me start off by saying I am supportive of this initiative, and thank you for advocating around this issue. I just, I wondered, has there been any legal pushback to some of the other communities that have put this forward, and how does that impact, how does that impact the advocacy that you're doing for City of Lawrence and Douglas County?
That's a great question. So of the 300 cities and states and counties that have adopted Tobacco 21, only one has challenged it legally, and that's Topeka. So.
Okay. I thought that I had read that, that's why I wanted to ask.
But municipalities have passed, municipalities in Kansas have passed it since the challenge in Topeka. And it will also be reviewed by the Supreme Court this fall with an anticipated easy decision. And we understand that there are a number of key organizations that will be filing briefs in support of home rule, which sets the stage for Tobacco 21.
Great. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Well, so just so that we can, you know, because we are on kind of a fairly tight timeline with this, getting a read on where the board is and whether or not we want to be supportive and put a letter together, I'm getting a lot of nods. Is there anybody who's struggling, thinks that this isn't a great idea for us? Nope? Okay. So we will work, I'll work with both of you, we'll get a letter together and we'll sign it, and on behalf of the board for you to submit to the City of Lawrence when you go in front of them on October 9th.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Okay. And that leads us to, our last item for today is to motion for, to go into executive session to discuss the negotiations, and I'm going to go ahead and just make the motion since I'm holding it. I move the Board of Education recess to executive session to protect the public interest in negotiating a fair and equitable contract to discuss negotiations pursuant to the exception for employer-employee negotiations under coma with Dr. Anthony Lewis, Anna Stubblefield, Jerry Kimball, David Cunningham, Kathy Johnson, Samree Devon, Matt Brungar invited to be present and with the board to return an open session in this room. I think let's start with 30 minutes, and then if we need to go longer, we can. So I guess that's 8:40 with possible action to follow. Second. All those in favor? All those in favor? Thank you.
Okay, are we? I don't know what happened on Melissa and Kelly.
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. That's a wait for... this is like...